Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of the Granville City Council. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask Marcy to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elder Los.
Here.
North Hook.
Here.
Steenstra.
Here.
Truce.
Here.
Vanderwaal.
Here.
Meringa. And Merrimack.
Here. Well, our scheduled pastor was unable to be here tonight, so Councilmember Paul Truce will be giving the invocation tonight, so for those of you who wish, I'd invite you to stand for that, and we're going to follow up the invocation with a pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for this beautiful day. Thank you for the many dedicated public servants we have here that serve the people of Granville. We ask that you bless our conversations here tonight, help us to make good decisions for the people of Granville, and keep us ever mindful of those, the weak and the oppressed, and those who are down and out. We pray all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paul, thank you very much. I appreciate that. You have before you the agenda for tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. And so I don't forget, Councilmember Josh Meringa is out of town right now and has asked to be excused from tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to excuse Josh?
So moved.
Motion and support. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Great. We also have the minutes from our last meeting, June 13. Is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
So moved.
And support. Any comments, questions, additions, corrections, anything anybody wants to emphasize or point out?
I gave a small one to Marcy.
Okay.
That we live in Granville, not Grandville.
Okay.
My phone auto-corrects sometimes.
Yeah, there is a Granville, Ohio. South Carolina.
It's grand here.
Very. Okay. Let's see, we've got a motion and support for that. All those in favor, please say yes. Yes. In the opposition, please say no. Next, bills. Ken, another set of bills that's fairly substantial, just over half a million, $509,000 roughly. Anything you'd like to point out on those before we open it up?
Well, we'd like to equate our spending with progress, and there is some progress in there and some projects, but I noticed several bills probably for council's attention. One, starting on the first page, there's a $13,144 invoice for Kent County, and that's reflecting the settlement of previous assessments with three properties, three anchor stores at the mall, Macy's, J.C. Penney, and Kohl's. So since it was for prior years, there's a reimbursement of funds the city's already been paid to the, back to the county who has satisfied all those taxes some time ago now. In terms of progress, on page three, there's an invoice from Great Lakes Paving that's related to the repaving of the trail between Wedgewood Park and the community building. On page four, this goes back to December of last year when council approved a project to replace the roof and gutters at the community building. That's been completed, and there's a $25,000 bill for that amount, for that work. Further progress is indicated by page four, there's an invoice for just over $69,000. That's a progress payment to the state of Michigan for the city's share of the repaving of Chicago Drive, which is just about wrapped up as a project. And then the other couple of things I noticed were just the monthly water bill for May to the city of Wyoming, and two long-awaited vehicle arrivals from Todd Wenzel, a '22 Tahoe and a '22 pickup truck. Other than that, I'd be happy to answer any questions council might have.
Questions for Ken? Okay. If not, is there a motion to approve the bills tonight in the amount of $509,139.6?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Other comments, questions? Okay, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember North Hook.
Yes.
Steenstra.
Yes.
Truce.
Yes.
Vanderwaal.
Yes.
Elder Los.
Yes.
And Merrimack.
Yes. Great. Next item is presentation by Lisa Sarber from Senior Neighbors, Senior Neighbors Update. Anywhere on Lois with you tonight? It's just great to see you, Lois.
Thank you for having me. Just, the center was closed for about, just about a year and a half because of COVID. We reopened last June. I would say we're probably at about 75% of what the attendance was prior to COVID, but it increases weekly. So last Friday, we served lunch, and there was about 100 people in the building. So it is slowly coming back. We, prior to COVID, we had focused on a lot of health and wellness. That center really loves health and wellness classes, Matter of Balance classes, anything to keep themselves active. And we had two classes a day. When we reopened, we have one, and just recently, we broke that class off, and now we have two again, because we were about 25 people in that class. So it's a little bit more than what we could handle in the space in the back. So what we have noticed is, is that in the afternoon, we used to have groups of seniors that would come, and they would play cards, and they would sit. We have not seen as many gatherings, so they'll come to the center, they'll participate in an activity, and then they leave. They don't necessarily stay, or they'll come in the morning, they'll eat lunch, and then they leave after lunch. So that's another thing that we're working on as far as programming, trying to make sure that we're utilizing those hours in the afternoon for what the seniors want and desire. And so we've done a couple of things where we're walkabout Granville, so we've taken the seniors to different parks in Granville, to, you know, the boat launch, different places so that we can get them out in that regards. We've got a Grand Lady Princess outing, and that is sold out. We have 40 seniors signed up with a waitlist for that. And so we're trying to do things like that to try to get them involved in the afternoon along with some of the other projects.
Anyone have any questions?
I do. So I understand you are going to be taking a new position, so tell us about that.
I've been promoted through Senior Neighbors, so I will still be with Senior Neighbors, but I will be the director of the Foster Grandparent Program, which is a part of AmeriCorps. So AmeriCorps has three programs, Senior Companions, Foster Grandparent, and R S V P. So Senior Neighbors is a host to all three of those programs. So I will be in charge of the Foster Grandparent Program, which will match low-income seniors with low-income school districts. The seniors will receive a stipend to go into the school districts, and they can volunteer anywhere from 20 to 40 hours a week. And they get paired with five to six students within a classroom that the teacher has identified as high-risk. And then they tutor them through the school year, and then at the end of the school year, it's about whether they met benchmark, or if they are above grade level or whatever. So I will be in charge of that program. And of course, that program has taken a little bit of a hit because of seniors not wanting to be in the classroom because of COVID, some of the schools not bringing us back on because it's been a lot with COVID. So we, we had 65 volunteers that were throughout Kent County, and I think we're at 42. So that's another thing about growing that program. And so I still get to work with seniors, and I get to work with kids, so it's a win-win. Although I'm going to be sad to leave the center, so.
And when is that, when's your last day?
Officially, I've started transitioning, so I'm at the center a couple of days a week, and then I'm at Central Office a couple of days. I will be officially in my role at Senior Neighbors July 5. So this is actually my last week at the center, so, and I've been there 10 years, so.
Any questions for Lisa?
Yeah, I do. First of all, I want to say we're very sorry to lose you. I know you've just done a terrific job over there, and you're always there when I'm there, or when I, which is very seldom lately, but you've, I mean, you've kept the, kept the really active program going there, and I want to thank you for that. Question, what, two questions. First of all, regarding Foster Grandparent Program, you mentioned there's a little stipend they get.
Yep.
Is that the same thing that you mentioned, R S V P, the Retired Senior Volunteer Program? Do they also get a stipend?
They do not get a stipend.
Because it says they volunteer, okay.
Nope. The R S V P program doesn't get a stipend, but the Senior Companion Program and the Foster Grandparents, they get, it was $3 an hour, they just increased it at the end of this month, will be $3.15 an hour. And so, and that money is not counted against Social Security, it can't be denied their benefits for Section 8 housing, none of that. So if they're on a controlled rent plan, anything like that, it can't be counted against them. And then some of that income, they may not make it for an income threshold, but if you, if they have medical bills, that can play into whether they can be in the program or not. So their medical bills can offset that part of it, so they would qualify.
Yeah. Second question, regarding our facility here in Granville, where you've been working. Do you think the quality of that facility holds our programming back, or holds us back in terms of being able to serve the seniors well here?
You mean as far as like a building standpipe? I think prior to COVID, we were getting to the point where it was very challenging to be able to have dual programming in the front of the building and the back of the building at the same time. Are we there yet right now? Probably not. But I can foresee with the amount of seniors that are coming and the traffic that's coming through, we are getting new members every single day, and they may not come every day, but that may be something in the future that Granville needs to consider at some point, just so that there's multiple things going on.
Thank you.
Any questions for Lisa? If not, don't go too far away. We do have something for you, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Stay close, don't leave quite yet.
Okay.
So with the council's indulgence, do you mind if we right now dropped onto the consent agenda, item number three, a proclamation for Lisa Sarber? Is there a motion to approve that proclamation?
So moved.
Support. All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
In the opposition, please say no. Okay, Lisa, I'm going to ask you to come up again. Council has adopted a resolution recognizing the service of Lisa Sarber. And I know, like, you probably love to be the center of attention.
No, I don't.
So I'm going to read the proclamation. And then I've got a copy for you. Whereas the city of Granville recognizes the valuable contributions from the Senior Neighbors Organization dedicated to helping those in our community, and whereas Lisa Sarber has provided exemplary service as the Granville Senior Service, Senior Center Coordinator for a decade, and whereas Lisa is known for her calm, caring, and fun approach to her public service activities, and whereas she has worked to help modernize senior communications through technology and social media, thus promoting resources and stronger connections, and whereas the city of Granville wishes to publicly recognize her outstanding service to the community. Now therefore, let it be resolved, Steve Moss, Mayor of the city of Granville, Michigan, along with the city council, to hereby issue this proclamation to honor Lisa Sarber for her outstanding years of quality service and dedication to the senior community. Further, the council profoundly thanks Lisa for her wholehearted devotion to the citizens of Granville and wishes her well in all her future endeavors, and witness whereof I have set, here unto, set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Granville to be affixed this 27th day of June 2022.
Thank you.
So I'll bring this out to you in a minute. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
You've played a huge part in many people's lives. You've made them better. You've made this city a better place. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. So anybody here like to address the council? Come on up, let us know what you're thinking about. Welcome, Carolyn.
Tonight, I just wanted to basically touch base with the discussion that you had last meeting relative to the use of the ARPA funds. First of all, I was pleasantly surprised that all of you identified basically the parks and recreation program as a top priority, so to speak. But I would encourage you to do a little bit more than just do that, because I also heard, and I'll just use the two prime examples, well, we need a new fire truck, the pumper truck and this and that, you know, maybe we ought to think a little bit about that. I would suggest to you, along with needs at the water treatment plant, we need this, we need that, I, I would challenge you to understand those things are going to get done. You don't need the ARPA funds for those things. You'll get them done, because they're important to the city, and you'll find a way to get it done. You'll rearrange the budget to get those things done. One of the things I did talk to you about earlier this year was actually setting aside and dedicating a portion of the millage just for parks and recreation needs. You didn't do that. You did set aside some money specifically for pickleball courts. That's great. I would recommend, when you start thinking in terms of the ARPA funds for the Parks and Rec Board, you almost think of it as an inverse prioritization. What's the thing on there that you would think ain't going to happen? The bridge across the creek to open up the park. That ain't going to happen. Too much money. Maybe we'd get a grant 10 years down the road. Why do that? I think that might be at the top of your list. Here's one-time money to do those things that I know that you won't have the will or the wherewithal to take care of. Think of the things that you keep putting off, because you don't have the money, takes too long, might have to set aside $100,000 for 10 years to get it. Those are the things I think you need to use the ARPA funds for. Ice skating rink. I think that's another high priority, but it's very expensive. It'll come out down the line, five, 10, 15 years from now. Put it near the top of the list. Do the inverse prioritization for use of the ARPA funds. The things that you and I both know will be kick the can down the road till you get it done, because it's too expensive, too time-consuming, too this, too that, not enough money. That's a good use of your ARPA funds.
Thanks, Carolyn. Appreciate the comments. Anybody else here tonight? Welcome.
Thank you.
Just come on up to the podium and give us your name and address, if you would, and tell us what you're thinking about tonight.
Yeah, my name is Lynn Smith. I live on Kiowa Court, which is on Big Spring Lake. Steve, you and I have kind of had a conversation about the geese.
Yes.
And since I've not been at city council before, I'm not sure if you've had any of that conversation about the geese problem in what I see in Granville or at Wedgewood Park. So I ride my bike through Wedgewood Park, I walk through there, I see little kids in the water, I see them waiting barefoot. I think if they're anything like my grandchildren, they probably have a cut somewhere on their ankle, foot, whatever. I'm going to bet that at times, there's E. coli in that water. I see geese shit all over the sidewalks, all over the grass, all over the benches. I see it at the mall. Now, we have a kind of a lake association at Big Spring Lake. For the last couple of years, we've applied to the DNR. This year, they're not doing goose roundup because of the bird flu, but in other years, we have had that option. We also participate in nest destruction, because in the last 30 years, we've gone from 7,000 geese to 700,000 geese. And it's not a big problem for the state if they were spread out, but they're not spread out. They live in the lower third of the state of Michigan. I'd like to suggest a couple of things. I don't know the property owners, all of them, over at the mall, but if you've driven to Myers from the back of the mall, you've almost ran over a goose. They're unintimidated. They can apply for a permit to collect goose eggs. Granville can apply for that. There should be signs posted at Wedgewood Park, "Don't feed." Don't feed the geese. Once they decide this is where they live, they come back, year after year after year after year, and they have babies, and those babies come back. Again, I don't know if there's been previous discussion regarding the lovely geese, which I don't hate, I don't love them, but I also would rather see, you know, 10 instead of 5,000. So I would ask that maybe someone approached the nursing home and put up a sign saying, "Please do not feed," at Wedgewood Park, at other parks, and maybe someone would look into procuring some advice from the DNR in order to figure out how Granville can at least somewhat decrease its population of geese.
Appreciate the comments. I see that Ken was taking notes. Ken, if memory serves me correctly, and I think it does, I remember there was, I believe the Whispering Springs Homeowners Association did some kind of a geese catching or tagging or something.
Yeah, I think we've had a couple private groups do that.
Okay.
Through the mechanism that Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Is talking about. We also, we do have signs posted. Unfortunately, they're not necessarily followed.
Okay. I, I go through Wedgewood Park, I've not seen.
Heritage, I guess I'm thinking of in particular, which we have, that may be our largest waterfall problem. So I'm pretty sure, last time I was out there, I took a picture of the sign, and somebody in the background was tossing bread out, you know, so, yeah. So it's, it's a struggle.
You know, I, I get that. I, I do get it. And I think, you know, it's, it's fun if you have a little four-year-old until they get in the water, and, you know, they, they get E. coli, or, and then, you know, also Granville has maybe some liability. I don't know. I think the most disgusting part, and, and again, we just kind of started, we don't have a formal association, and I do know that there are other lakes in Granville that have more formal arrangements. But, you know, again, just to be able to try to keep the population somewhat at bay, but they're also very aggressive. And I saw a male go after some little kid, and his dad must, I mean, he, I've never seen anyone run so fast to grab that little kid, but, you know, that, that baby, that four-year-old, three-year-old was trying to get to some babies. And that, that male lifted his wings up and came after that little kid, and, you know, it's like when they're in that state, and there's 40 of them at the park, you know, it, it can be a little more than maybe we should be handling.
I think we'll look at several things. Some of them will be repeats, but through our newsletter, through our electric sign board, through education, through better signage, you know, try to do what we can to get people to cooperate. I don't know, I mean, we're, we're certainly, I think what the mayor's referring to, the council actually had to sign off on that with the DNR to allow it to happen, so we've been supportive as a city of that. I think there's a limit to how much can be done, and birds tend to keep on coming, so they're protected because nobody can shoot them, you know.
Well, they are protected right now, which I know the DNR is somewhat taking a look at, but, you know, there are, again, there is also, on normal years, goose roundup that can also, and it's $500 for 50 geese. There are several organizations that will do that, but, you know, maybe a big fireworks display that says, "Don't feed the geese." Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate the comment. Anybody else here tonight like to address the council? Come on up to the podium. Lois, you got anything tonight?
No.
Okay. Good. We'll move down then. Next item, council communications from the city manager. Ken, notice of retirement. This is the formal notice of retirement, because you've given us a heads-up, so. Another item on the agenda tonight will be Michigan Municipal League Executive Search, but anything you wanted to say about that?
That really is it, Mr. Mayor? That, you know, there's action on the council agenda tonight to follow up on the budgeted expense of an executive search through the municipal league, and didn't seem like it was very appropriate to take that action without the official notice, so councils had quite a bit of time, especially because we talked about it through the budget process, to know this was coming, but the, the letter is simply restating what you already know, putting a, an actual end date, you know, on there, December 2, and that clears the decks for the action the council will take tonight, and what will then become a multi-month process here, so there's nothing you need to do with it tonight. There's nothing to be voted on, so it's more of formalities.
Thank you. I did learn something from it, that 26 years, 10 months as manager, so when I first came onto the council, I would have been for much longer, you'd only been manager for two years, I think. I guess I.
Yeah, it would have been '96 that I started as manager, so.
Interesting.
'98 you were.
Something like that. Okay, thank you.
Time flies.
For letting us know.
Yeah.
Again, we'll, we'll be getting down to that MML executive search proposal, so. Next item, ordinances and resolutions. Amy, I think this is yours, amend the fiscal year, and the good news is it increases the fund balance after all is said and done. So that's good. We're going to pay attention, but that's the thing that sticks in my head, so.
That's the, the main point of the whole memo and everything, so that is the good news. We did have, after reviewing the budget, we do have the general fund and seven other funds that are requiring budget amendments. As mentioned in the memo from Ken, and from me, it's only to align the budget to what has been previously approved by council. So overall, the net effect of the general fund budget amendments adds $216,200 to the general fund ending balance. The projected 2223 budget did include 200 of that $216,000, so the projected balance for the end of the fund, or, yeah, projected balance at the end of the 2223 fiscal year will be about 15.9%, which isn't a lot of change from what we had in the budget hearing, public hearings.
And that, that's predicated on the full expenditure of line items through the rest of the fiscal year, correct?
Right. Yeah. So the general fund revenues had some really good increases from the local stabilization fund, the state shared revenues, building permits, and then we have right-of-way funding from the Metro Authority Act that did increase the revenue by $392,000. But we did have $255,000 that's going to be lowered. Most of that is additional tax allocation that needs to go to the major street funds. The Chicago Drive and Wilson Avenue projects both came in well over what was budgeted for, and then we had additional work that needed to be completed on Chicago Drive to get the project up to where it needed to be, which was another $120,000. So that $200,000 could have been added to the general fund fund balance, but because we need it in major streets, we're allocating that $200,000 to major streets so that we don't have a fund deficit at the end of the year. And then we had a slight decrease in probation fees and ordinance fines from the court. In the expenditure side, we had $150,000 in wages and fringe benefits that would be lowered in the court and the police department due to positions that were vacant throughout the year. We also had, we lowered the legal fees assessing by $35,000 and $12,000 in the Parks Department because the Heritage Basketball Court did not get completed this year, but will be in the next fiscal year. It is already budgeted to be completed then. The DPW department totaled $82,800 in increased expenditures, but the biggest one was the pension funding, and that was that reserve pension fund that we sent over to MERS to just boost up the amount of funding that MERS has for our retirement system. And that doesn't actually affect the fund balance, because there was cash on hand for that. It was, it doesn't affect the unreserved or unbudgeted fund balance, so although that's there, it's not an expense that we weren't expected to see, and it's not really coming from our cash. So overall, the difference in the expenditures after the amendments, that'll actually increase the fund balance by $79,200. And then in the capital improvement fund, we are lowering the expenditures by $330,000. That's because the fire department roof replacement is not going to happen in this fiscal year, and the Kwanzaa hot removal, which is also an, an agenda item tonight, won't be completed until next fiscal year either. In the special project fund, we lowered the. In the special project fund, we lowered the expenditures by 480,000 for the Mill Rice Park grant match that hasn't been approved in Michigan's budget yet, so, in the state's budget, so that'll be carried over into next fiscal year as well. And then in major streets, as I had mentioned earlier, we'll have the additional tax allocation of 200,000, and it's due to the Chicago Drive and Wilson Avenue projects. In local streets, we had $40,000 and higher than budgeted, but that was due from carryover from the prior year. And then the building, the library building was all budgeted in 2021 to be completed, and it carried over into this fiscal year, so we'll increase the budgeted expenditures by 3.7 million in that fund. The DDA festival and events cost came in $20,000 over budgeted amounts because we've added stuff to what the DDA is doing downtown. And then in the motor pool, there was a variety of items. Wages and fringe benefits are being increased because we moved an existing employee to the mechanic's, assistant mechanic's position, and so his wages are not going to be paid for by other funds, but are going to be paid for by the motor pool. And then the gasoline and oil expenditures were $35,000 more than expected, and I think we all are well aware that that was gonna happen. Then equipment maintenance is 55,000 higher than budgeted, mostly, a lot of that's due to repairs that have been made on vehicles that were damaged in accidents, so we also had 35,000 in insurance reimbursements that will cover a majority of that. And then we did have a carryover purchase of two patrol vehicles of 70,000 from last year that we paid for this year. And then, so the insurance reimbursement will pay for a portion of them, and then the rest will be covered by fund balance, so. And there was a very detailed list of all of these expenditures that was included in there, so if you have any questions about any of them, I can go line by line more if we want, but.
Questions for Tammy, or any documents?
Yeah, I just had one on the DDA, it's just a question of how that works. Is that something that the city spends, then the DDA reimburses? Is that just a city expense? How does that work?
No, the DDA actually pays for those events, it's just they didn't have enough budgeted in that particular.
Okay, so we're making an adjustment, but it's coming from their budget?
Yeah, and we also had more, like, event revenue that was in their budget as well, helped them pay for that, but the DDA does pay for all of the events that happened downtown.
Great, thank you.
Other questions for Tammy? Okay, if not, Marcy, what would the resolution number be for this?
3282.
3282. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 3282, a resolution amending the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 budget?
Support.
And support. Other kind of questions or comments? No? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Norhut?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. So now, down to the consent agenda, and we've already taken care of item number three there, so. We have the reports from May for the investments, the EMS fire and the clean water plan. We also have the minutes from the July Force Celebration Committee. They've been meeting regularly and gearing up for next week, their May meeting and their June meeting. And we also have a couple purchase orders, so approval of the consent agenda would be in the best interest of the city. The first one is the Quonset hut demolition, and there's a memo in there about that, as well as a proposal from the Michigan Municipal League for executive search proposal. And so is there, before we open up for questions or just clarifications on anything else, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda in the best interest of the city?
So moved.
Support.
And support. Anything anybody would like to talk about in particular? If not, Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Norhut?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. City managers report.
Ken? One of the, this is one in a series, I didn't go back to check to see how long I've been doing this, but ever since the city has a municipal separate storm sewer system entity in the state of Michigan, regulated by the state of Michigan, have had requirements for compliance with the NPDES rules for stormwater. We have accomplished that by working cooperatively with a long list of other city governments, and that list shows up on the back page of the documents that have been given tonight. Coordinated by the Metro Council, it's everybody kind of putting in a share of the cost to manage it for everybody. And then the staffing for that is provided by the Metro Council, they've got the Elgro staff, which is just very, very well-versed in these rules, and they keep all the communities on track. They help us with our documentation and our permitting, and it's worked out very well for however many years it's been. That's been accomplished by a series of three-year agreements, and the current three-year agreement is expiring this fall. And so, Granville Metro Council has offered to continue to provide that service through its Elgro staff, and have provided a proposal for the same services we have been utilizing through the council for the next three-year period. So that would be from October 1 of 2022 to September 30 of 2025. The city's cost for that this time around is $15,358 per year, and that's actually a decrease from the last three-year period, that was about $500 more. So, your staff is strongly recommending we continue. If we didn't, our only option would be to administer this ourselves, and that's gonna entail some skills and some personnel time that we just don't have, so. Charlie and his staff coordinate well with the Metro Council folks, and this is by far the most efficient way for us to use our resources to comply with these rules, so our hope is that council will authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for another three years.
Questions for Ken? Why, is there a motion to allow the mayor to sign this agreement, continued agreement for cooperation and coordination?
So moved.
Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Vanderwall?
Yes.
Galderlos?
Yes.
Norhut?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Ken, anything else?
Only thing that I wanted to highlight that's in your packet but not necessarily an agenda item is the material related to the library amphitheater resurfacing, and council, through your memo today, found that we've actually have the benefit of some unspent funds from the bonds that were used for the library expansion, approximately $100,000 worth of funds, and they are required to be spent on the project, so that means they've gotta be related to the library structure. And as we all know, it's been expanded, what wasn't expanded was refurbished, so in looking at the possible uses for additional funds at the library, the thing that just really stood out was the amphitheater. The roof was redone as part of refurbishment, but the surface of the amphitheater was not, and so we've engaged our engineer and consulted with our folks at DPW about potential resurfacing there, the concrete pavers. If you were out there, I think everybody was out there from council, either at the ribbon cutting for the farmers market pavilion or at the recent food and fun and music events, it's pretty stark where the new ends and the old begins, and so the thought was to try to carry that through, extend the same feel, and to give a new look to the surface there. So what was included in your packet was a design done by Moore and Brewjink that would accomplish both a new surface, but also try to upgrade ourselves a bit with regard to our environmental consciousness, and we're looking at permeable pavers for that surface. And so what that would mean is that it would be designed in a way, and with materials that facilitate infiltration of groundwater into the ground, as opposed to capturing all of that and then conveying that to storm sewers and creeks and rivers. There still is, would be an outlet, so if there was heavy rains, you know, access could go that route, but that's the staff's suggestion. This is, you know, the proceeds from our public bonding, and we want to run that through city council, so I put that in your packet for your information so you could see what we were looking at, and then perhaps through your council comments at the end of the meeting, if there's any reaction to that or to other possibilities that we maybe didn't contemplate, it would be good to have that kind of feedback so we can continue on with designing and making plans for using those extra funds.
That's all, yeah. Okay. You'll notice on the agenda, there's also been a request to adjourn to a closed executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, but before we do that, let's do council member comments, and JR, start with you tonight.
Just a couple things. Well, I think at our last council meeting, Justin said, if there's anybody else who's looking to retire, speak up now, and of course, here's Lisa moving on, so, don't say it again, please. Well, Lisa, thank you for all your years of service. It's been a pleasure, the times I have volunteered at Senior Center, your presence has been known, so thank you very much for all your service. Really looking forward to the 4th of July, having the parade back after a couple years hiatus, looking forward to being part of that, I'm sure we'll get some details on where and when to meet. The Buck Creek Trail update, I ran that this past weekend, Charlie, it looks awesome. Question, are they gonna demolish that little bridge?
Yes.
Kind of figured, but just wanted to know for sure. That looks fun. And then the porous pavers at the amphitheater, absolutely, you knew I was gonna say that, Ken, so, yeah, it's a great opportunity for us to put our foot down on some environmental options for redoing that there, so, thank you.
Yes, to the porous surface at the amphitheater update, it does need refreshing, I think that's a great idea. The only other thing I have is I do have the parade information on where to meet and stuff, so all those council members who are intending to be in the 4th of July parade, you can huddle up briefly after the meeting. That's it.
Ken?
Carolyn, Lynn, thank you for your comments tonight and sharing your thoughts. Lisa, thank you for your years of service, and yes on the pavers.
Okay, this is gonna sound redundant, but yes to the pavers, I really thought that was an excellent idea and much needed. Tune up there. Congratulations again to Lisa, and best of luck to you as you begin your new adventure. I wanna say that I really appreciated Carolyn's comments, I think JR brought up the splashpad, and I think that's an opportunity maybe where we can look at something that we would otherwise be kicking down the road and make that project happen, so I support that. Also, it just so happens that this past weekend, the Historical Commission was preparing the Old Schoolhouse for the June 2nd open house, and many members of the Historical Commission said, "There is too much goose poop in this park." And there was, as I tried to make my way to the schoolhouse, the path was just covered, so I absolutely agree. Some people refer to that park actually as Goose Poop Park, so that's not really great for the city, so I echo what was said and seeing what we can do about that. And then finally, I will not be here for the 4th of July, I'm headed north to visit my parents in the UP, but I am excited that this is happening again, and I just wanted to thank Councilmember Truist for stepping up and, you know, taking on this role and all of the knowledge and effort that you've put into it, so, thank you.
Marcy's the only guy to thank, but I'll talk about that sometime after 4th of July, you won't believe how much she's done. It's incredible.
Thank you to Marcy.
Tammy?
I can share with you, thanks to both of you for all your work for the 4th of July, and I know you've done it for years and years and years, so thank you, and stepping up again this year. And then I just want to, like, say thanks to Carolyn, because I think you're right, there are things that we have to do, and we will do one way or the other, but this is a chance with the ARPA money to think big, or think deep, or think outside the box where we have the ability at this point to create a long-term gift or a benefit to this community that's gonna go for numerous years, so I just want to say I agree with you, and I think that's a challenge to all of us to try to think outside the box, this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, what we can really do for this community.
Great. Yeah, I just want to wish early everybody a great 4th of July. I will be out of town and hate to miss it, because a couple years since we've had the full-blown parade, but have fun, everybody. Also, in our packet was Granville Police and the Parks, the schedule, what a cool idea, that's one of the reasons we love this town, just things like that, so. That's, I think, all that I have, so as I mentioned before, there's been a request to adjourn to a closed executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining, is there such a motion?
So moved.
Support.
And motion and support. Any comments, questions? Marcy, would you call the roll? I'm sorry.
Hold on one second. I think, do we say adjourn or recess?
Are you coming back or are you not coming back?
Yeah, I think we would like to.
Okay, then. I think it should be recess. All right, we'll start all over. Is there a motion to recess to an executive session for the purpose of discussing collective bargaining?
So moved.
Support.
Any other questions, comments? We'll consider the other motion withdrawn. Marcy, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Galderlos?
Yes.
Norhut?
Yes.
Steenstra?
Yes.
Truist?
Yes.
Vanderwall?
Yes.
And Mayor Moss.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight.